Would you like to call the city of Richmond meeting to order January 2nd, 2020? If everybody could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. This is a reminder, if you have any devices that make noises, please turn them off or on silent. At this time, we'll open up our open public forum for anybody wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda. In River Lake days, you guys are on the agenda, so just a reminder. Seeing nobody jumping for joy, we will move on to our first item approval of the agenda for this evening. On your dais, you have four items in yellow that were added. That would be your agenda for this evening. I look for a motion.
There's other additions. I'll make a motion to accept the option.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of meeting minutes from December 4th, 2019. They were put in your box. You're wondering why they didn't get sent out. She had a little issue with the computer last week.
I read most of it.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of bills paid as of December 26th, 2019. Any questions or comments on the bills that were paid? If not, I look for a motion.
I've seen none, so I make a motion to accept the bills paid.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consent agenda for this evening, Resolution 100-20, approval of 2020 annual resolutions. Item B is Resolution 101-20, appointment of city commission members. Item C is Resolution 102-20, 2020 corporate resolution with the Falcon National Bank. Item D is Resolution 103-20, LMC limited liability. That's our limited liability for every year. I know on item C, I changed the wording on there. That should say Falcon.
That has been changed.
It will be. Police Sonny have one. Go by it on that.
Make a motion on the consent agenda, A through D.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? I do have one item on that, just to bring up, is the commission items. We did put it out as of December 1st for anybody that wanted to be a new member, and we received no other interests. Just so you know, it was posted for the whole month of December if anybody wanted to be on the planning commission or on the EDA.
Alright.
We have a motion and a second. Tim?
On that planning, you're supposed to be on that funding on this Resolution 101-20? Not Kimberly? Uh, yeah, for planning.
Something like that changed.
Not on the CD.
Okay.
No.
I'll add that. I just have one question. Fire relief association ex-officials, being a member of the fire relief yourself, can you be that?
Yes.
It has been checked out?
Yep.
Okay.
Checked it out with this here.
Good.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Unless we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda, all in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Carry. Move on to department reports for this evening. The first one up is police department, Chief Jason Bloom.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. Start off with just a monthly report for November. In Richmond in November, we had 89 total incidents for the month, three medicals, five suspicious activities, 52 traffic stops with eight citations. In those traffic stops, we had four narcotics violations and one narcotic DWI, and then 29 miscellaneous calls for service in the city. Just an update for the save stations. We've installed, there's been four more installed, one at the high school in Cold Spring, one at the DEF Speedway, and then Richmond Elementary on the south side of the building. Still looking, and sounded like today, we have two left that are being fundraised for, so $6,000. And then also, they installed the bronze plaques for the donors that represent the donors that donated for each station. So it's moving along, and it sounds like there should be Casey's, God, there's approved their corporate to have one on their property, which should go up towards the end of the month. And I know there's a meeting on Monday to kind of get updated on where things are at and what the plan is going forward for the remaining fundraising. We had one of our officers give a presentation for situational awareness for the Cold Spring Chamber of Commerce. It's good for their employees, different techniques that people are using that we're seeing, distraction to get the cashier to look over here while somebody's doing over here, and things like that. So he puts together a really good presentation, so if there's any businesses out there that would like to have that done, or I think he's contacted the Richmond Chamber of Commerce, but I don't know if they've set anything up yet at this point. We had four officers that were invited to shop with a cop that's hosted up in Sock Center. There was about 40 kids there. We had probably a dozen or maybe a couple more officers there to help out, and we go Walmart, donates everything, and we help the kids pick out presents for the holidays. So it's good for both the kids and for us, I think puts everything in a good light. It's kind of after the major travel season, but to make sure to travel safe whenever you're out. Couple, probably two, three weeks ago, we had in the 50 mile an hour zone down here by the gas stations, we had a vehicle going westbound at just over 130 miles an hour. They rechecked the radar and got it locked in at 124 miles an hour. They're just cruising through, so actually had to call ahead to the next officer to get it stopped instead of trying to race recklessly after it. So we did get him stopped, they did get a citation, but just make sure, not only for yourself, but be paying attention to everybody around you. And then it's after the busy season, but with all the packages getting delivered, just make sure you're tracking your packages. Don't leave them out on the doorstep for longer than they need to be. If it's expensive, you can either get insurance, require a signature on delivery, or ask neighbors to pick it up, but just a lot of things to try and help yourself out to make sure those packages get to your residence. And then winter parking, just a reminder, if there's a snow event, no parking on street between 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., otherwise you may receive a citation. And that's all I really have, unless you guys have questions for me.
One parking violation we have, is that a snow parking violation?
I can, yep, I will double check. That is my guess, since I know we got a lot of snow in that area, but I will double check.
Because I've noticed with a few of them that he's had to plow around two times for sure, not three.
The biggest concern is the ordinance is only set up for 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., so if he plows around, if he goes out and plows at 8:00 a.m. and then goes around it, we can't issue the citation. So we just have to make sure it's done during that timeframe is the biggest thing.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Emergency management, you have in your packet Eric Keating will be taking over as of the 1st of January to assume the director's role. That is all I have for the emergency management.
That we had at our last meeting, right?
We'll move on to item C, will be people's service, water, wastewater report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Couple things first, I was hoping to be able to introduce my new operator tonight. We're getting dangerously close right now. He hasn't had his physical yet, and he didn't want to like give a notice and stuff before, he knows for sure he's leaving, so I'm not going to disclose too much about him, but yeah, it's very close. He's accepting everything, and by the next meeting, he'll definitely be here. So you can meet him then, so that's a good thing. I know Mike's read it, but in your report, it's been kind of an interesting last month, six weeks, whatever. One of the things we had lost, the heater in the control panel at the base of the water tar, which controls, communicates them back with, to the wastewater plant, basically to the wells and everything else. The UPS in there got too cold because the heaters quit, and then UPS crashed. UPS is uninterruptible power supply. So that went out on us, and it was 2:00 in the morning, and my first instinct was, we're fine, there's going to be enough water until we get up. And then about two seconds later, I was hopping out of bed, because if the wells were running at the time that the communication quit, nothing was going to tell the wells to stop running. Then we would have backflashes of, the water tower overflowing here, we didn't want that because it was a very cold night, so came in, they were, we're not running, but proceeded to get things taken. We still don't have the new heater in there yet, but it's, you know, we got it a little warmer, we have a little makeup heater, but anyhow, if we know what's going on, especially if we lose communication over there again, so. But the heaters are going to be going in. It should be later this week or next week, well, actually, it is later this week because it's Thursday, again, feels like a Monday. But we will be getting the heater in there and stuff, so hopefully that's going to take care of that one. The other issue with computers is at the wastewater plant, all of a sudden, we did not have any numbers, because we can look on our SCADA system, and we know like the gallons per minute coming in, we know, you know, the existing oxygen level in the ditch is all that kind of stuff, and there was zero numbers on anything. This was middle of the day this time it happened, which we're fortunate, that usually don't happen that way. The last time this particular, we'll call it card crashed in the computer system is when the water tower overflowed, because it crashed, and then you have no dialer, nothing. And this time, we happened to be there, we noticed it, made sure everything was running good, and the wells were actually running at this time, and I knew that, but then we had the integrator coming out right away. And fortunately, when we took the box out of all our spare parts, we had another card that fit perfectly right in there, in the box, and talking to our preferred controls guy, $6,000 is what they're going for now. They do not make these anymore. It's pretty much a black market where you have to get them, unless, if there is an electrical supplier that has them, that's why they're $6,000, because no wonder they're in demand. So with that being said, we have, you know, we've kind of hit on this before, that we have to start looking at budgeting and getting into upgrading the computer system at the wastewater plant. Our, how I think probably best to do it, we can't do, if we do it in phases, we have to do like phase one first, so we can't, phase two is not going to be compatible with our existing computer that's running the wastewater plant right now. But I did get a price, and you guys, you guys can tell me if you want me to go get competitive bidding, I think it's $25,000 now, that you have to get several quotes for, right? Isn't that the number now? I think it used to be. But anyhow, I can, Automatic Systems is the integrator that initially put this system in. They're out of the city somewhere. I know when we had them come out one time to just verify at the wellhouse shortly after that whole upgrade went on, we were having problems with burning out motors with the VFD causing it, and they thought it was something we did, and they had to come out and verify, but they still billed us $600. That was for coming out, being on site a half hour and driving back. Preferred Controls, who I got this quote from is right in Albany. He's the one when the computer crashed, he was there within an hour of when this all happened, and we had things up back and running. I think preferred might be a little cheaper, but I can get other quotes if you wanted to, but just for phase one of the computer upgrade, again, nuts and you get, it's something we have to decide tonight, it's more the, giving the ideas, but it's two, it's a new HMI computer, basically, it's a Windows 10 Pro. Right now, our computer system there is the Windows XP. So it's, yeah. When I said it to Sonny earlier, she's like, ooh. It's old, but it was from 2013, I mean, 2006, which is 13 years ago. Then to upgrade the software from the RSVU to the Rockwell software, and then the screen licensing to that, and then upgrade the alarm dialer also to the new version, these are all things that you have to do because it's not compatible with our old system. But the total price is $12,205. That's phase one. When I talked to him about what's it going to cost to do the whole computer upgrade, because then we got to get into all the MCCs, which is the motor control center. At the wastewater plant, we have three separate rooms with little touchpad screens, actually, yeah, with the touchpad screens and all that, and things that, it's kind of a redundancy backup because of the computer crashes, you get, we want to be able to do it, and that's how we were running it when it did crash, but we're looking at, it's going to be probably $50,000 in that ballpark to do everything. And we had talked about with Tesla, as if we're going to tie it in with a project or something to get the final phase done, something like that. But them are numbers, you know, it's getting real, we have to look at doing something. The water plant, when we got that one upgraded, it was, it was lightning strike, insurance paid for it. You know, this one, we, we don't want to pray for lightning because that causes a lot of problems, but it's, you know, there, it was an upgrade, and that wasn't, I want to say it was $30,000 to $40,000 for that, by the time that was all done.
So when you said $50,000, that was for the whole project, or was that phase one?
That should be the whole thing. Yeah.
That was phase one and phase?
Phase two, yeah, phase one and two. By the time we're all done, though, it's going to be 50, and them numbers, that changes all the time with this computer stuff. So then...
I guess we'd probably want to see more than one quote, just for the fact that...
Yeah, we just have to.
Compare apples to apples.
No, and I don't have a problem with that, but...
Sorry, Greg, you want to look at seeing two separate competitive quotes for the first phase, and then also for the total, so they want to go about doing that?
Yeah, I would think, everybody think that way? One for the phase one by itself, and then one for the whole project, or did it separately? Thing is, if you're going to go with one for the phase one, you're probably going to use...
I would say, because you want to make sure that it's compatible, you know...
I would think you'd want it for the whole...
Just throwing it out there.
For the whole project.
I think you'd want, just the whole.
Probably separate it as phase one, and then what the total would be.
Right.
Because we might only do phase one versus any.
Right, so I was saying, okay. Sorry.
Nope, that's a good point. Couple other things, we have a passing from pernangonate pump, which is an additive, it's an oxidizer for the iron manganese to help remove it at the wastewater plant, I mean, at the water plant that started leaking. It's the purple stuff that makes a mess everywhere. Anyhow, bought a rebuild kit for it, I didn't quite do it. I actually have the pump in right now, we're waiting to get a quote if it's going to be, if it's going to pay to fix it. It's free estimate, it was free to get it shipped over, and they estimate it for free, then we just have to buy a pump from them if it ain't going to, but it's the place where they're the most reasonable anyhow, so we'll keep you updated on that. Otherwise, there's different lift stations, we have to get them sucked out, we're going to... What we get in the lift stations is, it's called fog, fats, oils, and greases, they kind of coagulate after they, people get the grease down, and it ends up building up on the walls and all that stuff. It's, you can bust it up and pass it through the system, but then it ends up at the wastewater plant, and you kind of have to deal with it there, it can cause issues. Austin Septic, who bought out Spodin Septic, they now bought a Jetter Vac truck, and the next time he's in the area, he's going to be able to blast the grease really small and suck it all up, and then it's out of there, it's gone. It's going to be probably $300 to $500 bucks to have him do it for two separate lift stations. So it's going to be, it's well worth the money to invest, you know, if we have to do it once a year, that might be max.
Per lift station?
Well, it should be total, depending on how long it takes, but it shouldn't be that bad, because we can have, be there, move the float stuff out of his way and just let him.
Let it go back down?
Yeah. It's nice having someone, there used to be nobody that close that had a big back like that, and he's at the Granite Company, I think it is quite a bit with it, so that'll be nice. The other thing in is it's mentioned, and I have a copy, and I think Sonny has a copy too, but we had our wastewater compliance evaluation inspection done, and that was late November, and everything went really well. Have the written report here now, there's a couple of, I have to go back and amend a couple monthly reports that had, I think it's the points in the wrong spot that was missed, you know, instead of, our phosphorus might have been a point one, and Chad had a 1.0, and then it's in violation, you know, just silly things, but it's generally what it is, is the points in the wrong spot that we just...
I gave that report in December. I got the same report.
Yep, yeah, you got a copy, yeah.
I mentioned it on our December meeting. It was just a couple clerical issues.
Yep. Yeah, but otherwise, he's, they like some of the forms that we use for basic verification that we're calibrating our machines, that kind of stuff, because there's stuff we have to do every day, calibrating pH and that kind of stuff, and dissolved oxygen meter and different things that they really liked, our forms we use to prove that we did it, and we have to update our initial, because we're supposed to, when we initial things, we have to have the log, the master log sheet of whose initials that might be on file, and we didn't have that up to date, so. Minor things, but overall, it was MPC inspection, overall, it went well, so. Oh, Sonny, what am I missing? Anything? Where's my time off any I'll sit on? Yeah, any questions?
Thanks, Greg.
Alright, thank you, guys. Probably see you next month.
Public Works in the streets, Gordy gave you a list of the snow plowing, and he is working on the sweeper, that little sweeper that was a 1990 sweeper, I believe, and he's rebuilding the motor in it, they had some issues with it the last couple of years, he's always brought up that it always leaked oil or used oil. He's working on that, and everybody had asked about the comp time. As of right now, it stands at 6.75 hours so far that they use comp time of the extra person that we had asked for that information.
That's what's banked.
Yeah, that's what's banked right now.
At the time. Just if you, with regard to the snow plowing and going around cars, you had mentioned, Jason was in today and took a phone call for me, that disabled car that's over here that he's plowed around a couple of times, he gave them till noon until tomorrow to get that moved or it will be towed, so. Just that.
We'll move on to the parks.
Question about Public Works. A lot of questions about Public Works, I guess. Over the weekend, we had some Minnesota weather, a little bit of snow, a little bit of rain, or a lot of bit of rain. I was bombarded with people stopping at my place of business, plus at different places, why we weren't out plowing during the rainstorm when the county was out and township was out. And, you know, some of these people were radical about it, some were very, very informative and say, why aren't we working with nature rather than plowing on Sunday afternoon and then going into the evening, plowing people's driveway shut with what would have been done on Saturday, they could have dug them out. The problem I had with this whole deal was I would have made a call, but I was informed by Mr. Mathiason a few minutes meetings ago that, as council people, we cannot direct any of our personnel. We have to go through the administrator. But we don't have an administrator, so who do we call? That's my question, who do I call? And I don't even have Sonny's number. Because I would like to know, these people were, some were very irate, and I think some other councilmen had, the council people had these during the weekend, had calls too, how come they aren't plowing, especially when it was so wet, so much water, and I would want to find out, is there, is there a second line to call? Because we owe this to the citizens, the way they were bouncing around with their vehicles, the way they were pushing slush with their vehicles. Either that, or I'm suggesting, thinking out of the box, suggesting coming up with a three-person board with citizens and members of the council on it to say, okay, let's get out there now when people are complaining. And this was, I told these, all the individuals, which was numbered over 12, that I'll bring it up to the meeting here to be discussed. So it's on record, that's being brought up, we have to do something, because granted, it's not first year that we had snow and rain mixed and slush, but, you know, one of the comments was one from one of the business people that mentioned, you know, people came into their establishment, it was a tavern, saying that they loved our arena, they went to the games, but to get uptown, they couldn't. It was terrible. So what are we going to do? And I guess the meeting's the place to bring this out. I see that he plowing, he's been doing a pretty good job all the way around, but then some of this doesn't make a lot of sense to me, where he puts it on a pile and then waits to haul away. Isn't it better to haul away all at one time and save the labor and save the cost of two different trucks? So I'm open for a discussion on this, I mean, this is...
Part of the plan of having it scraped, they went around with the dump truck, and they couldn't move a lot of the snow. They couldn't get the ice up, and all they did was kept bouncing over.
And what day was that?
That would have been on, it would have been like Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, kind of that day after. So he got ahold of Gerken and asked about bringing the road grader in to plow out and try to plow it off and get down to the tar. And between the two of them, because Gerken is our hauler, they were trying to make a plan of what was going to work. And Gerken does other stuff during the day also, so Richmond is not his only customer that he does. So they made the plan, and I said, just run with whatever you feel is right. You know, they were trying not to do the bombardment of putting snow on people's driveways, but it don't matter what time you're going to do it, it's going to happen somewhere along the line.
But if that takes place, at least let the people have a chance to remove that. And that's what I'm saying, if it's done during the day, it's not going to be frozen overnight, and they don't have to go over that hump. So that's where a lot of the serious complaints.
But during the day, also, if you look like on Main Street, they came in and they were doing every street around but Main Street, because they couldn't get in there because the cars were parked in all the wrong spots, and they didn't want to come in, do five feet here, 10 feet there, and then go back out. So they were doing like Central Avenue when there was nobody there. They did some of the other streets when there's nobody there. But they're still mindful of, you know, there's a lot of people around, a lot of cars around the different areas, that they can't just go plow everywhere at any given time.
Well, my question that is, the county does both sides, and they go all the time around these vehicles, the vehicles are, I just think we have to look more into serving the public, and if it has to be plowed more than once, let's get it through there. The county's roadway, which is everybody knows up from Casey's and out both ways, was down to the tar. So if anybody wants to add or subtract from this, go right ahead, but I've told the people I've ran, the other question is, who is our backup that I can give these people that number, and they can voice their concerns if we're not supposed to be calling our personnel? City council is not supposed to be calling our personnel. So where's the number? So I can relay that off?
And I had actually got a text message.
You got one too?
Yes, I did.
Thing is, any message that's left here at City Hall, obviously Sonny's here, the day she is, and so is Joanie, it's not like they can't answer. I mean, I understand after hours around holidays, there's nobody here, I understand that, but I leave messages all the time here, and the next day, they call me back every time. So that's, I guess your avenue is call up City Hall, it'll go on a voicemail, and one of them will call you back. Either Sonny will call you, I've had conversations with Tesla, even if she's out, she's still our administrator, even if she's on break for, you know, the time she's out. So I don't know what else to tell you, that's...
Well, I would like to plan.
I mean, I, you know, I live on Main Street here, and them plows, they fill mine up 24 hours a day. I mean, I'm out there, if you're not, I don't care what it is, I mean, I see my neighbors, it's piled up, and it's hard, and it's, and they were still not giving down the ice on Main Street. They were, they were busting, they were busting up, and it was bumpy as ever on Main Street here too, so. I can't, and they might have had it been smooth over there, but it wasn't smooth over here, though, I know that. So I, and I understand, like I said, I know we all try to get down to the, down to the tar, but that one there, even, even the county couldn't even get down to the tar on our side, so. I think if the neighbors see me, they see me out there probably for two, three straight days trying to scrape that stuff off and keep it out of my driveway.
Anybody have any suggestions?
I think that's something that we could, like I said, I think if you want to have a line, I think that's something that we can discuss and even continue, if there is an emergency hotline, I don't know if the mayor would be the first contact, I think that could be probably the first one, I think it'd be done. first one, I think it'd be done would be your mayor.
We can discuss it at a workshop too, if you want to think about it a while or something, but we have to come up with a plan because I don't believe the citizens think it's not working.
We'll add snow removal for our secondary.
Let's also see if we have during our workshop too, let's, uh, let's bring Gordy in also too if we can. Um, I appreciate him coming in and, and talking about that too, if you're okay with that.
No, that's fine with me. I just, we have to solve this problem, that's all I'm after. It was on the weekend and these people were very, some were very cautious about it.
Yeah.
And some were pretty.
Yeah, I know that rain, uh, that rain was a real, you know, especially this, uh, this last weekend and stuff too, that last time this rain was, uh, it was really kind of inconvenient because it did do a lot of messing up with a lot of things. Um, and even if it, even because, I would say because the roads were packed down prior to all that, even like Jim was saying too, um, you know, putting that rain on top of it and then trying to get down to the very bottom, um, you know, we probably really needed a, a few more days of either a, some real heavy rain to wash all that possible frozen stuff so they weren't bumping and bumping sort of all over the roads, or we needed to have a lot warmer temperatures, you know, with, with that on, on a few days to be able to do that because obviously if any salt or any of that type of stuff's not going to eat through any of that to be able to help that matter out, um, you know, then we're just kind of back to, back to square one. But I, I think it should be discussed. Yeah, I think you're right, in a workshop, um, I think because we do have a lot of concerns in and around the city and stuff too, so just unique circumstance. For these last, for these last couple of snowstorms, it hasn't just been just snow. It hasn't just been just snow, it's, it's a combination of, of everything that we're getting, the freezing rain, the rain, the snow. So, but no, I, I agree with you, Pat, I think it's definitely, uh, something that needs to be discussed, so.
Okay. Anything else on Public Works and Streets?
No. No, just, do we know the value of that sweeper? You know, is it worth doing all this work? I guess that would have been, the sweeper's being, mini sweeper, am I calling it mini sweeper? It's a smaller one?
Yeah.
And having a head on and everything else, I'm just wondering, is it worth that or should we like trading it in? Another item, another item to put with the, with that.
I don't know what's worth, so, yeah.
I don't know what the cost is going to be, so it's.
Okay. Okay. We'll add that as one of the items. Uh, moving on then to the parks and arena, Kevin gave you a report, there's been many high school games in January here scheduled, uh, plus St. John's starts their league on January 14th. The outdoor skating rink is open, it's been open since December 9th. It's opening hours are four to nine weekdays and 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM on weekends. And, you know, pavilion has been checked and cleaned all the time. I've been in there, kept nice and clean.
I've noticed quite a bit of, uh, snowmobile traffic over there that they actually park their trailers and unload and use that bathroom, so it's definitely well to be.
Just getting used.
Yeah, used. Very long.
And on the Cory Trail, they're still waiting for news on the state bombing bill from, for their money of 1.2 million for the trail for Rockville. And Richmond takes over the chair, this is coming there. We do.
All right, we'll move on.
Just, I had one question pertaining to this, Jim. I know that in the, uh, in Kevin's report, there was a concern about for younger kids having a place to simply skate, um, which I know that's been, you know, I would say almost a, a, a few years ago or more. Um, I know we used to have, if I'm not mistaken, over by the elementary school, but in a sports, they used to basically take that area right there and used to, I think it used to be basically a flooded rink with obviously no warming house or anything there, just a place for, for kids to skate. Um, so it seems like, um, that's kind of another concern right now. It sounds like, you know, the only opportunity that they have to, to possibly skate outdoors would be when a particular hockey team's not being played on the actual hockey rink itself. So, um, I don't know if we have a possibility of any.
He has that in here.
Yeah.
He's got it in here that, uh, we added a small kids skating rink north of the boards.
Oh, north of the boards, okay.
We have requests for, concerned for younger children, not.
Okay. But are we going to be able to expand that? I'm saying that basically that's what I'm getting at too, is can it get, be able to be a little bit bigger?
I would say it's only in the alley, alley to the rink.
Is that all it is right now?
I would say that's the only room they have. I haven't been over there, so I don't know.
Just if you're north. And they still have family nights too.
Right, only class, good stuff. Okay, all right, thanks.
EDA council report? Michael, the ODA reporter, is Kim giving it?
Yeah, that might.
Thanks, Kim, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, we actually did, we did have a meeting, uh, on the 17th of December. Um, we did, uh, we've kind of been going over, um, a bunch of, a bunch of the same things that we've been talking about for the last few meetings. Um, and we've been working again to with Tracy Ryan. Um, basically we're trying to, um, establish, um, some certain things that we want to accomplish as an EDA. Um, and we've got a list of particular priorities that we want to basically look at and we want to, um, take them as, as a number one priority to a number two, to a number three. Um, we've got, um, a possibility of some available property, uh, that's going to be looking at, uh, hopefully being used, um, as is one of our highest priorities currently right now on Highway 23. Um, and then we've got everything from bicycle racks to bicycle safe routes that be marked within certain roads within the Richmond area. And, um, we've talked about some signage issues and stuff too, on how we can attract basically more businesses in and around the Richmond area from the corridor of Highway 23. Um, so those types of things have been discussed. We've also been talking about how do we continually, um, how do we continually work on continually establishing the, the amount of businesses that we do have in downtown? Uh, and then also looking at those vacant for sale buildings that we have available in downtown Richmond and how we can utilize those in some way and hopefully, um, kind of combination of energizing our downtown area along with, um, building for the future on Highway 23. So, um, that's, you know, kind of what the EDA's really been kind of talking about for these last few meetings. Um, but, um, hopefully I would say by our next meeting, um, which is January 21st, I think at 6:30, yeah, here at City Hall, um, I think we're, we're hopefully going to be able to maybe come up, um, with a list of things that we really want to do, uh, for 2020. So we can present something to the city, basically stating that here is a, here's a thing that we are going to hopefully try to accomplish by the end of the year. So that's about all I have for the EDA report.
Anybody have any questions? Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Plan Commission, we had an old December meeting. Um, we have no meeting scheduled for January at, at this time. For Cory Trail, the next meeting is January 9th at 9:00 AM in.
In Rockville.
In Rockville.
Yep.
Next item up is a proposed no parking on the post office side of Central. We had gotten a bunch of complaints from drivers, Mike brought it up at our last meeting, that, that corridor between the arena and the post office and the trail pavilion. There've been a couple of close calls in the last week or two with a lot of business going on with the high, high school games. And everybody that has called me or has stopped me and asked about that, I always ask them, what, what, what would be your solution? And they said, well, if you didn't park on one side or the other, would help a lot, it would open the lane back up. Cause right now, because there's about a two and a half foot snow drift on the, or snowpack on the, on the arena, uh, on the post office side, people park further away and also the lane gets down to a little bit more than one lane of traffic through there.
Right.
And everybody that I've talked to said, well, why don't you take one side away and make it no parking, then it would open the road back up where at least you have a chance to go somewhere. Cause two or three people virtually locked them up there from hitting children. So I said, I'd bring it up and the proposal was to go on that side because that's the side that's got snow on, the other side's got the city's sidewalk, which is cleaned off, which makes it easier for access for in and out. And.
Isn't there a sidewalk on both sides?
But the one on the, on the, on the post office, post office side is not cleaned up. That's the snow's all on there because that's, there's a boulevard, then a sidewalk. There's actually a four foot boulevard and then the sidewalk starts.
How you going to drive by there? But I don't want to sit, I guess, is it plowed all the way to the curb?
I did not look at that part. All I did was drove through and I seen how much snow's on one side and when they were parked there, you really, it gets narrow. So that was one of the ideas, but I mean, I wanted to talk about it tonight and hopefully we'll bring that up on our workshop if everybody has a chance to look down there.
Right.
And if you think that's the right answer, then maybe we'll move forward at that point.
And I think what we're, we're finding out too, when you have an event there at, at the ice arena, um, especially like a hockey game, um, majority of people are going to park in that parking lot where the post office is and the pavilion and everything too. And then they're going to be walking across, meaning either walking in the crosswalk or just basically walking across. And I think that's where we're finding an issue where if we've got cars parked on both sides of that, um, you know, people are, are darting in and out of there and, and that, yeah, that's just an accident waiting to happen somehow, some way here. So, um, so obviously I, you know, if we're looking at either one way or the other, um, I would put no parking on that particular side that faces or goes towards the parking lot near the post offices and the pavilion, leave that space wide open. So then it gives accessibility to at least be able to have people walk safely across that area. So just again, my suggestion for now.
And we're just talking about Third Street South?
Yes, just that block of the post office.
Right, yeah, it would just be that.
Trail pavilion.
Yeah, right, yeah, exactly.
Just the crosswalk there. Probably not even past the pavilion, once you go across the trail, I don't think they need to have.
I know one time way back, we talked about, um.
Just going to say.
We talked about doing some type of, uh, uh, flashing, flashing, um, crosswalk. I, I know that was talked about, boy, years ago.
So everybody, so everybody take time before our next meeting and take a look at it, see what you think, what we should do.
Right.
And then we'll bring that back up on our 16th workshop.
Okay.
All right, uh, proposed water ball fight, River Lake Days Committee has, has asked, is asking the city if, if we'd be willing to allow them to do a water ball fight. And I would think part of that's going to come back to the fire chief that, my understanding of the fire chief okay's it, they can use it as a training and that way the water would, the city wouldn't get taxed for using the water, the fire department would actually use the water as their, part of their training. And a lot of that, that's where your liability, which they, Tesla had brought up, that was one of the issues was liability. And if the fire department uses that as a training, then the liability falls back to the fire department for the training part of it. Because it'd be all done by the fire department anyway, because it'd be their trucks, hoses, and then obviously the water would be. And I don't know, I, I got two different quotes today because I called around to Watkins who does a water ball fight, just to kind of get an idea of how much water you use. They use anywhere from six to seven thousand gallons. But they also have, I thought he said like 10 or 12 teams come in from different places. So I don't know what their idea was, if, I don't, I didn't get a really idea of how many teams they were doing or how big a tournament they were trying to run. But it all based off how many teams you have, how many events you have and how much water you're going to use.
Okay.
You know, if you use, the guy, the other guy that I talked to that does some of this, he said, if you only have eight teams, you're looking at about 5,000 gallons of water for the fireball. So I guess River Lake Days would like to know if, if we're willing to allow them to do it as part of River Lake Days, because that's part of their moving forward so they know what, they can gear towards what they're going to do this summer.
I don't have any problem with the exception if it's a dry year or anything else, we put watering bands on, then it would get scratched.
Is that good enough for what you're looking for?
I mean, that only makes sense. The other question I have is, we used to have water ball fights in River Lake Days many years ago and nobody participated, there was nothing but the family of the firefighters there, so I don't know if it's a that big of a draw anymore, but maybe if it's promoted right, it will be.
Yeah, I think so. Do you see that some of the surrounding communities do it yearly? Um, I, I guess you'd have to ask them what kind of participation they get.
And why did some of them drop off?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
But I mean, I think if you, I think it's worth it. Look at it.
Sure.
I think, we haven't had it for a long time, so I think it'd be kind of great to see it.
Part of what River Lake Days Committee has been trying to do is actually, we've actually gone through literally the last, every brochure ever created for River Lake Days and have gone back to try and get new fresh ideas, including old ideas of, and again, like you said, how to promote it. So we're trying to kind of bring back some of the things that people have said were fun. Um, and this is, this is one of them, so. And we are looking at different ways to promote it as well too, so.
It's a good idea. That's a good idea to go back and look at some things that have been successful and other things that people are kind of wanting again and stuff too, so.
Right.
It's a good outlook on that.
That hasn't been done from my understanding in quite some time, so, so kind of bringing back something different to different generations.
So is everybody fine with letting them move forward with this event as part of theirs?
Absolutely.
Any other questions you have?
So as far as the water usage goes, we just need to get approval from.
The fire department, whoever's going to be the chief, because it'll have to be the one that signs off.
Okay.
On the water part.
Most of the time the fire chief's the one that writes the other, has communication to the other department.
Yeah.
It's one of those, we'll go to yours if you go to ours.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
That's all we need for now, anyway. Bye, we'll see you soon.
Item F, reminder.
Thanks for coming.
I did get a couple complaints, people complaining that individuals were pushing their frozen snow and ice across the, from their driveway into the neighbor's yard or driveway or whatever, um, with asking the chief here earlier, um, it is $150 fine if, if somebody pursues it. And/or if the, if it ends up going to the state, it ends up being a misdemeanor by state statute. So it could be a lot worse than a $150 fine, but that's the starting point, what Richmond has in its heat schedule right now. So, just to make people aware of it, it's still illegal to do it, it's illegal to do it in the county, in the township or in the county. So just beware of where you put your snow, keep it on your own property or, you know, or if you have to pay somebody to haul it away, then so be it, that's what you have to do.
Right.
So, I was just more of a reminder, just so people can say they didn't know that they couldn't do it. And then the other reminder is please shovel your fire hydrants and try to keep the sidewalk clean so it's walkable.
I have a question, uh, Mr. Meier, on the hydrants actually currently right now too. Um, if you're looking around town a little bit too, because of the, um, because of the snow and the rain and everything that we've had, um, you know, and, and the plows going through and stuff too, some of those existing piles currently right now that are kind of possibly surrounding some of the hydrants and everything too, you know, it's, I'm, you almost got to take a stick of dynamite to get through it, you know? So I know it's going to be difficult, uh, for some of them and stuff too, to be able to do that and, uh, you know, until we get a, a little bit of a, of a better thaw going and everything too. But I've seen some of those areas and point blank, I don't know how they're going to get through that. I really don't have any idea, so, um, is that anything that we can look at with more powerful equipment to go around to be able to get through some of that?
I know, I know one of the comments, because I had talked with Gordy about that.
Yeah.
And he said, if we go in there with a skid loader, you run the risk of ripping the grass up.
Right.
And if you go in there, you end up hauling it away. Because once you go push in there, nobody wants another big pile on their lawn, which is where it's going to end up, on somebody's lawn to go in. So you're kind of, it's kind of a catch 22. What do you do?
Right.
I mean, I guess we can add that to our conversation on, on the 16th.
Yeah, it's, you know, kind of currently right now, it's easier said than done right now with, with some of those.
We'll just, we'll add that to our January 20th, uh, 16th meeting on how we want to deal with that snow, if we're going to have, have them haul it away and deal with it or whatever, so. Anybody else have anything else? or whatever. So anybody else have anything else? Other matters concerned, our next council meeting is January 16th at 6:30. It'll be our workshop. And you've heard a few of the items that'll be on. Most of them are going to be talking about snow removal and snow plowing on the streets. So that's it.
And let's make sure that we can get Gordy here also too.
Yeah, maybe a suggestion that we bring Mr. Girk in also.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I had an idea too. Yeah.
Because it's all, it's all hearsay saying, well, he's too busy or he doesn't do this or he has other customers and everything else. But if he's here and he wants to, if he has us as a customer, he can answer the question.
Maybe, maybe suggestions or something.
With that said, you can turn.